All right.
Welcome, everybody, to the June 9th Town Council Meeting. Let the read that the entire council and mayor are present, two virtually. And at this time, I'm going to ask my good friend Chuck Ruckey if he would stand up with us and say the pledge of allegiance. Navy man he is. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. And I forgot, can the council please remember to have your microphone on and to please speak into the microphone? I know I'm looking at Jan out there, she's been bugging me for a long, long time about, folks, I'm sure I'm one of them, don't speak into the microphone in our. Okay, well, we'll have to take a hearing aid count. Thank you. And thank you, council, for being so considerate to our senior residents. Okay, at this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? If there is, please state your name and residence. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Laura Blackwelder, 3256 Cannon Cane Court, Chesapeake Village. And I'm commenting on item 11, number 6. As you know, I will miss the next planning and zoning meeting, so I'm commenting regarding the map that will be proposed.
And so we're clear, you're commenting as a private citizen.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Please take personal responsibility to research the legal impact that redrawing the RPC and other community boundaries will have on preserving land. Many of the parcels located in the resource conservation areas on the proposed map that our planner would like us to pass urgently are currently protected by virtue of having a designated land use within the communities in which they were originally plotted. These boundaries are reflected on our existing map. A redrawing of the residential plan community boundaries, RPC, was not proposed as part of the comprehensive plan on any map. Because the boundaries of the RPC and low-density neighborhoods have been redrawn on the recently proposed map lie tight against the developed portions of the community, and undeveloped parcels are reflected to be situated outside of the communities, it is likely that the protection on these parcels will be diminished. After so much confusion and dialogue regarding the 200-acre FIDS habitat parcel adjoining Fishing Creek, it would be astounding if the parcel was not secured prior to the commencement of construction in Richfield Station as a result of an error. Please use caution when approving the map.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on anything on the agenda at this time? If not, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 19th public hearings?
Move to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the May 19th Town Council Meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the June 6th informational work session?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, we have the distinct pleasure of welcoming Girl Scout troop 1132 to talk to us about the Cadet Journey Take Action Project. Thank you, ladies.
Hello.
Now, I know you got together and picked so long because I was there for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're going to play the video first, that's why I need to hear Holly. Okay, here we go.
Then Journey Take Action Project. Every year, billowing cigarette butts end up in dumpsters or landfills or big dogs as litter on shorelines, parks, and sidewalks across the U.S. So these are pictures of cigarette butts we found around Rowan's and Kellum's Field. The cigarette fountain that feeds the bay. Chesapeake's litter problem, especially cigarettes, damages the bay's aquatic life, contaminating the water and its trash from the area of breeding. Cigarettes get into the bay in all sorts of ways, like the cigarette butts getting tossed onto the ground, and any areas can inevitably make their way into the storm drains, creeks, and rivers, even if they are miles away. These are the special receptacles designed for disposing cigarette butts. The cost of one receptacle from their website is $99.96, or the town could provide its own. If these receptacles are placed around the town, people will have a place to dispose of their cigarettes and where cleanup groups can go and throw away their trash. The link for details is in this presentation. Our suggestion: For purchasing the receptacles as six-pack with stickers, the link is in the slide, and for the box placement, for fill-ins outside the water park, outside the community center, Kellum's Field, and Brownie's Beach. After all the cigarette butts are collected, we found a website that you can send them to so they reuse them for other purposes. All you have to do is request to send, collect them, print a label, and ship.
All right, that was our presentation. As you can see in the slide, these containers are used to dispose of cigarette butts, and so they're not littered around public areas, and they're not littered into the water. We want to keep our bay clean, of course. And the cigarette butts will be shipped in containers, shipping boxes, and the shipping labels are on the website, as well as the address. And they will be recycled according to how... The website. Yes.
Well, thank you. Does anybody else want to... Any of your group want to... Don't sit down yet. Anybody else want to say something here? Or you're the spokeswoman?
Yeah, I am.
The lone spokeswoman, okay. Well, then let me ask our lone spokeswoman a question. Would you do us the honor of having your picture taken with the council?
Yes, we would.
All right, very good, now let's do that.
Do you guys have any questions for us? Is what we're supposed to ask? Uh, yes.
You guys have the PowerPoint?
Yes, you do.
I can send the website and stuff for it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Now we got the important stuff done. Okay, Town Administrators Report, do you have anything of particular interest that you'd like to share, Holly, before the council may ask you a question or two?
Do not, thank you.
Okay, very good, then let me... If Peggy's on the call, I'm going to start with Peggy. Is she... Do we have Peggy here? Peggy, do you have any questions of Holly?
Uh, no. Thank you.
Okay. And Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Yes, thank you. I see the... We're working on roof replacement for Town Hall. Are we addressing the metal roof at the cupola? It looks like it needs some maintenance. I wouldn't suggest replacing, but painting an appropriate type of something.
Yes.
And then I know that the... It's a small world, I was project manager on this expansion here, so I helped buy the shingles for this thing here. Are we going to be in keeping with the design? Because it's like one of those shadow type of shingle type of thing.
Yes, we're going to...
Same type of shingle, or?
Yes, same appearance.
Same appearance, awesome. Safe routes to school, 100% construction design, that is not affiliated with the sidewalk to Chesapeake Village?
It is.
It is, okay, so... Working through the 100% design, safe routes to school. Okay, so what's the MOU then associated with that?
So the town is still waiting for the MOU from the state. We are required to have the MOU, we bring that to a Town Council meeting, where the Town Council will authorize the mayor to execute so that we can start the project, so we can release the RFP for the 100% design. We do not have that yet.
Okay, so they require another MOU for that stage or something? Yeah, it's interesting that we have this windfall of ARPA funds over here, but the state doesn't seem to have enough money over here to get this project wrapped, and it's six years later, I know. Anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you. Under the Corps of Engineers dredging, just for the record, the disposal of that material is going to go to our town disposal site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. On the Kellum's Field work, the riprap channel and such, do we have any idea of a schedule for that? Jay, that might be yours.
It's me. We have a field meeting scheduled with MDE to confirm the delineation. I failed to bring in the date, it's later this month. Once that's complete and they've confirmed our delineation, we can submit our permits for that work. That's pretty much what we're waiting for, the design is done.
Well, good luck with that.
Thank you.
Received a request on Bayfront Park, are we going to open the portable restroom sometime?
Yes.
Thank you. And since you have it in your report, I was going to touch on it under economic development, but Taste of Beaches is on this year, folks, so make sure you get it on your calendars. We've already got Kenny Holmes and Big Money Band booked for music, we're working on Chesapeake Mermaid, local breweries and wine stores, and lots of vendors from past events, so make sure you turn on out for that. Thank you.
Yeah, Larry hit on one or two of mine, I just want to follow up. On the grants for the projects that are moving forward, this is great, so I just want to, you know, continue to commend the work that we're doing, the meetings we've had with Biogee, keeping all that moving. The Walkability Group has been dialoguing, I hate that word, electronically, back and forth for ideas for some of the potential new funding that has come in. One thing I'd like to clarify is that these projects do not need any of that new funding. That's actually been something that's been asked a little bit around our group. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
So we're breaking new ground with the new funding. The last thing I want to say is, can you give us, and if it's premature, just say so, any kind of update on how the public engagement is going, in terms of feedback, response, et cetera?
It's going really well, we have about 100 responses so far.
That's outstanding, wow, okay, cool. Okay, I'll continue, like Larry, we'll continue to plug Taste of Beaches, I will continue to unplug. Thank you.
Yes, I just have a few questions on this one. The first one is under the federal judge preparation. It mentions the access channel would be no more than 75 feet wide. And I'm trying to picture where, maybe we can pull up a map or something, I'm trying to picture where this channel's going to be for access to the jetty improvement. I can't picture it.
So in the link, the full maps are provided.
Okay, so you mean the notice ID W912DR?
Yes, in the bid packet, and that's on our website. And also linked, actually, in this form.
It's probably better if you look at the link.
Okay. All right. The next one would be Kellum's Field also. It says, where is... Where is the receiving south end? Where is the location of this in Kellum's Field?
You're talking about the storm drain pipe?
Yeah.
Jay, did you want to address that?
So the existing one that we're going to just kind of sister, put an adjacent box to it. If you left right out of here, turned right towards the field, and made a left to go to the totlot area, the boat parking that's on the north end of that totlot area, it's in that northwest corner right there. It's not a very large structure. It's kind of right in the corner, right before the baseball tee. And that's what drains the entire facility.
That's shocking. That's amazing. And then if we go to town permitted activity, I had a question on, when the second floor of ABNERS is complete, will that include the ability to have more pole tab, electronic bingo machines, pole tab machines? What I'm getting at is, they have a... All businesses that have pole tabs have a restricted number, a cap on the number that they can have, is that correct?
Yes, are you referring to the pending permit application?
Exactly.
Right, so that has not been fully reviewed, or, but that does not have anything to do with any gaming devices?
So it would not be... Okay, so it would not allow for like, an increase in the cap on the number that we currently have?
That would be through the state, but no, this is just for an expansion of their actual facility, so no, it does not involve the gaming.
That's all I read, so I didn't have the, kind of like, full information, I was like, hmm, that's interesting. Other than that, I have no more questions, thank you.
Thank you. Operations Managers Report, if we have any questions of Carla's report, I'll begin with Valerie and work my way around the horn.
Just a few, and really, it's more like an observation. It's, I think it's absolutely phenomenal that we offer active-duty military and veterans and their families access to the water park. I think that was wonderful. And do we have any concerns that it reached capacity within an hour, or is that just the way it's going to be, because we know that we're trying to have an enjoyable experience there? So I like the capacity limits that we've set, but is this a concern?
A concern as in operationally, or?
Turning people away.
Turning people away. It was handled to the best of our ability this weekend, we're definitely working on finessing that for future years.
Good. Good answer. And I also think it's wonderful news that you had active shooter training, I think that's really important, so thank you, you're doing a fine job.
Thank you so much.
Building on what Valerie said, it's wise but sad that you have violent critical incident responsibility. Thanks.
Agreed.
My questions have already been asked, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize if I missed something there, I was wondering, the past couple of years, we've had some caps on the attendees at the water park. What cap's going to be this year compared to past couple of years?
So we're keeping consistent from last year?
I'm sorry?
We are keeping consistent capacity from last year, so our capacity is 450, which is around 33% of our available capacity.
Thank you.
And Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just nicely done with the Stars and Stripes Memorial Day ceremony, and no additional questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Peggy?
Uh, no, I have no additional questions, thank you.
All right, very good. Next is the Public... Don't go anywhere, Peggy. Public Works Administrators Report, we've read Jay's report, and before I ask Peggy, I'm going to remind the council again, could you please speak into your microphone? It's in front of you, it just helps if you speak into it, and like, if I talk this way, nobody can hear me, so please do so. So Peggy, any questions of Jay?
No, I have no further questions.
All right, and Keith?
No, thank you.
All righty, Mr. Greg?
Yeah, I have a couple. I have a question from former Councilman Chuck Rutke. We were wondering...
That guy's a lot of trouble, be careful.
Well, knowing that he was on the committee to help design Veterans Park, we were just wondering the status of the waterfall there.
Actually, I've researched a company that is going to do a different paint technique, because you know, that whole fountain and everything there is a poured-in-place concrete that we've painted over the years, it's kind of in a failing condition, so instead of just painting it and getting the fountain online to make it through the season, we're going to wait until they come in, sandblast it all off, it's like a three-part epoxy system, a binding coat, paint it, get it right, and then get it online. And it's also chlorine-resistant part of it, and there's money in the budget, but I need to make some improvements to the fountain, the way it runs, to keep it lower maintenance than what we've been doing kind of through COVID. So I'll be honest, it's probably not going to have the fountain running until the fall, but at least when we get it online, it'll be right.
Sounds like it's getting a facelift and an upgrade in the finish, so that's a good thing.
Greg, if I can, for the record, Chuck Ruckey was the original chairman of the Veterans Park Committee.
Correct.
And only us old folks who like history, you know, remember this stuff, but, and I was, I had the honor of serving under him on that original committee, and that was obviously last century. But thank you for your service, sir. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was enjoying the Stars and Stripes Festival, kudos to the town for putting that on. I did notice, though, is there a new building down there on the grounds, Jay? There looked like there was a shed of some sort that was constructed down there. Some history behind that?
Holly, you want to answer that, or you want me?
That's actually for the beach box, that's their shed.
Their shed? They have storage in the main building, did they outgrow that?
They have some storage in the main building as well.
Okay, thank you.
No additional questions, good job, Jay, thank you.
A couple things real quick, first of all, I just put an asterisk next to the railway trail, I'm just going to take a minute to say that, you know, I spend as much time on those trails as anyone, I think, and I think they look great. Now, I'm not suggesting that keeping up on them isn't a good plan, I'm glad it's in here, but, boy, I, you know, I'm usually pointing stuff out to you, and right now, it looks good, so thank you for that. I have a question back related to Veterans Park. There was like a week when the benches were all gone, and then magically they reappeared, and I'm just kind of curious what happened there.
So the benches that were along the bayfront, behind the wall, over the years, from the salt spray and the waves crashing, they got to a point where they rusted beyond repair, and they also had the slats that were broken. So we looked around, shopped around, found some benches on Global, and actually put those back, and waited till they came in, put them back. And to be honest, I don't think there is as well of a product as what we had, so now we've reached back out to Victor Stanley, and we're going to leave those four, because they're behind a thing and they look close enough, but moving west as you go, parallel to the park, there's three benches on each side, and there's also seven benches over by the memorials that we're going to replace in time as we move through, because they're in, the slats are deteriorating, and by the time you replace the slats, it's just as, almost as expensive as buying a new bench.
Okay, good, thanks for the update.
Sure.
It was about a week ago that I noticed it, and then somebody else brought to my attention, I don't know, it might have been taken care of, but if and when the opportunity arises, and I'm not sure if it's you or the landscaper, if you enter the railway trail to the right-hand side, that grass probably needs to be cut.
Yes, and that is the landscaper, and I spoke with him on Monday, actually, so he needs to do that.
Okay.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, and thank you.
Sure.
That's all.
Thank you. What a Reclamation Treatment Plant Report, we read Josh's, it's going to be, give me a while to go from John to Josh, so just excuse me here, to, we've read Josh's report, and I'll begin with Dr. Bodine, if she has any questions.
Hi, yes, first of all, welcome to the monthly meeting, good luck. I do have a few questions.
Okay.
All right. So first, welcome aboard to your new staff member, Matthew, that's wonderful. And I'd like to bring to the attention in the last paragraph on the first page, where it says on the note, "5/27, two staff members responded to the plant ahead of an incoming severe sun thunderstorm." I think that is a great approach, to be there proactively when we know that we're having severe weather, to see if anything goes wrong, and then be there, take care of it. I think that's fantastic planning. And in the same sort of vein, I noticed that we used the shellfish protection tank three times last month, which seems like more than normal for the amount of rainfall that we had. Is this a stormwater runoff coming into the wastewater treatment plant problem, or something else?
To the best of our knowledge, it's from infiltration intrusion through to the gravity sewer, and from Inaroma County, Calvert County, North Beach, some from Chesapeake Beach. We are tracking it, we've been generating graphs correlating the rainfall to the actual flows that are coming in, hour by hour, and we are able to see where the major constituents are coming from.
That's really good, because that's important to how we calculate the various percentages for the partners, correct?
That is correct.
And so, anyways, I just wanted to bring that up as, using the shellfish holding tank three times in a month is more than normal. So thank you for answering my questions, and again, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome. We have no further questions, but I did just learn something from what Valerie asked, and it does raise maybe a future question, which is, do we ever renegotiate those percentages? But you don't have, you can answer it now, or not, it's kind of interesting, I never thought of that.
Yeah, she's got an answer.
There's a fixed percentage and then a variable rate, so the variable rate does change by use.
I wanted to build on the shellfish protection tank and just point out, for the record, the critical purpose that that serves, that had that tank not been there, we would have had overflows as a result of those high flows, so it serves a very definite beneficial purpose in protecting our waterways in the bay. And had my farewell and congratulations to John, if he's watching, which I'm sure he is, he's got nothing else to do now. Thank him for his years of service. Again, no SSO, no sanitary sewer overflow spills to report, another great year, and we will be voting tonight on the generator access platform that we talked about, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Josh fully into the saddle there, I don't have any questions for you, I would like to follow along behind previous comments about Mr. Castro, we're certainly going to miss him, but good luck, Josh, we look forward to your service for the town.
Thank you.
Before I go to Keith, I have to reiterate what Greg said, as I'm sure you know, John told you, you've got a good council here to work with you, so you're in good shape, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Keith?
Yeah, I'll just echo the sentiment of welcome, and I have no additional questions.
Thank you, Keith, and Peggy?
I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Okay, Code Enforcement Report, if we have any questions of Connie, I'll start with Peggy, and work my way around the horn, as they say on the diamond. Peggy?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
And Keith?
No questions tonight, thank you.
Very well, sir.
Yeah, I have questions, comments, not necessarily about the content of your report, Connie, we talk here at Town Council about the importance of strong code enforcement in town, and we think that you've done a great job. You're going to be somebody else that the town's really going to sorely miss when you leave, and I was wondering what the plans were to fill your shoes, when, big shoes to fill, when you go, is there any...
That's not a question you would ask me.
Yeah, no personal questions there, just code enforcement report questions.
Yeah, okay, well, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just reiterate his word, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions, but just for the record, I want to point out that there was a page missing from the report that's in the file, and that is the, under the open cases, what I call our legacy cases, the ones that we've been tracking for a number of years now, so we need it, we got it.
I know, I'm going to spill the beans on Connie, that was a test, wasn't it, Connie?
The funny thing was, the funny thing was, he was waiting, if I had closed those cases, he was going to say, he was going to tell me I could go now.
For the record, as I said last month, until they're closed, you can't go in. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
No further questions, you know, we chatted, you will be missed.
Thank you. Yeah, I reviewed the report, I have no questions, but thank you for your efforts, I know it hasn't always been easy doing code enforcement, telling people what they may not want to hear, or do not wish to hear, but thank you for your efforts, you've done it with a lot of grace, and so I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Connie. Okay, we have no Town Treasurers Report, Town Engineers Report, if we have any questions of Wayne, I'll begin with Dr. Bodine and work my way around.
Oops. Really, one question and one comment. The question is on the flood resiliency plan, I think this is what was in here last month also. It says, working on detailed surveys of important infrastructure in flood prone areas. I was wondering how it's coming along. Wasn't, is new?
It wasn't in there last month. The map was in there last month, but the detailed surveys were not. The detailed surveys are going well. We've got most of the field work complete and located. And it's being compiled into our office, into the overall general map at this point.
That's great. And based on that, I mean, again, if, whenever you can like provide dates, that would be great because that way we can just track the projects as they go. And it's just really helpful. But other than that, no, nothing else. Thank you.
Talking absolutely no, and I have some questions. So on the sidewalks, I'm a little confused by the report, to be honest, Wayne. I'm wondering if there aren't some typos here. So offices structured should complete their review by end of April. So I'm thinking this is out of date.
That was the last update I've been able to get from them. As you may have recognized when Holly said we don't have any response from the MOU, we don't have any response at all. In fact, both of us have been trying to get responses. So you're correct, that's been sitting there and that's the last response we have.
Okay. That kind of renders my next question moot, which was, you know, the, the meeting was held on, on November 2021. So that, that's accurate and we're just that far away.
We're just sitting waiting.
Okay, well, I, I will not shoot the messenger then. So thanks, thanks for the report. The only other question I have is on the heritage. I had asked this last month. Definitely would be interested if you can share the punch list as it evolves. Really, for no other reason than my own education, maybe other people will find it interesting. It's not like I'm going to have any input on it. I just will find that educational. And so if it can, if it's electronic and it can be shared with council, I'd love to see it.
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
A couple of updates. Pre-bid meeting on Fish and Creek dredging on June 2nd. Any updates from that meeting?
I'll say, I don't, I don't think anyone ever showed up. Jay was at the, at the park, at the DMP and no one showed up.
Okay. On the 261 sidewalks, just for clarification, offices structures, is that under SHA?
It is.
Okay, that's good to know because we have the Maryland Minister League Conference coming up next week. And one of the events that happens there is a roundtable with a lot of the departments and things. If they're there, I will follow up with them on that. That'll be great.
I think the town administrator has the exact same plan, so.
Well, then the two of us.
Well, the three of us, I'll be there too.
Catch them outside.
Australia will be there. Uh-oh, it might, it might be a gang up. Maybe when I just drop a few guys off.
And on the flood resiliency plan, I did see the crews working around Seagate and 27th Street the other week. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Larry. Councilman Mars.
Just of interest, at the water park, the 3D model, what, what's the status of that?
A scan is done. We were here, I think, two days. We came out one day and scanned it, went back and saw we had gaps. Had to come back another, another day while we were here doing other work anyway. So we filled in the gaps. That model, 3D model is currently being built in our computer system. And I'll have it ready, I'm going to guess, in the next week or, week or so to, to view.
It sounds really interesting. Looking forward to seeing it. Thank you.
It's really cool.
Thank you, sir. And Keith.
No questions.
Thank you. And Peggy.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Deputies report Sergeant Shrouder is on the call. We've read the report. Peggy, if you have any questions, we'll start with you.
No questions. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Peggy. Keith?
No questions. Thanks.
No questions from me. Thank you.
And Larry?
No questions. Stay safe.
Two quick questions. Is there any update on?
Lieutenant Colonel McDowd just wanted me to let you know, Mayor, that he apologizes for being there tonight, but his wife broke down out of county and he's in route to rescue her. So he will get in touch with you later on tonight or tomorrow.
No, I'm glad to hear his priorities are in order. Okay, Charlie?
I was wondering if there was any update on last month's report regarding the arrest of guns and drugs. Is that, is that something we have any sort of update on because it wasn't in the report?
With, with the, the family?
Yes.
Across the way there?
Yeah.
The, you talking about the Adner?
Yes.
I have no updates. It's still under investigation. I know they're still collecting evidence and gathering information and getting ready for trial as far as I know. I know our drug enforcement unit is handling all the investigations. I can try to reach out to them to see if they have any updates. But I don't know what kind of updates they will give me because it's still under investigation.
I would suggest that if there is any updates, that Senator Hollinger can let the town administrator know and she can disseminate that as we see appropriate. That's what we'll do.
Yeah, that's, yeah, no need to do anything out of band, but that plan sounds very good. Thank you. No further questions to point.
Dr. Bodine?
No questions. Thank you.
Very good. Once again, sir, thank you for your service.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, we've read the report as always. If we have any questions, please funnel it through Larry. Going to be a windy one, so I need a drink. Well, except for Christmas, our June meeting is always my favorite. It's the conclusion of our fiscal year and time for the council and town staff to, to reflect on their accomplishments, prepare for a fun summer and the upcoming fiscal year. Great time to be in the Twin Beaches. We just had a wonderful health fair and a tremendous Stars and Stripes festival with a real down home, all-American family picnic. I also applaud North Beach Mayor and Town Council for hitting the ball out of the park with their first Friday events. After a two-year pause, the fireworks are coming back to Chesapeake Beach on July 3rd, as well as the, the Taste of the Beaches on September the 17th. However, like all societies, we have social ills to recognize and address. Many of us are hurting right now and a lot of us, a lot of folks are on the edge. Mental health and domestic safety are real life problems that need to be addressed, not hidden. And there are nothing to be ashamed of. It was great to see so many tables promoting citizen access to resources at our recent health fair. But we can do more. Moving forward, we need to and will incorporate mental health awareness in all of our town events. And I am specifically talking about domestic abuse awareness, suicide prevention, as well as opioid, alcohol, and gambling addictions. Thank you. Back to a fun summer. July 1st, first Friday at North Beach. July 3rd, fireworks in Chesapeake Beach. And September 17th, Taste of the Beaches here at Kellums Field. Thank you, everybody. Have a great summer. Next, Planning and Zoning Commission. We read Larry's report. Is, is Larry on the call? No, okay, good, okay. Then, then what I want to do is just, you know, state that, you know, while in the report, you know, Chairman Brown correctly states that planning and zoning is not required to hold a public hearing for the amendments that we're about to discuss later. It needs to be known that for the record, planning and zoning and the town council will hold public hearings on those. So just to be clear to everybody. Okay, Board of Appeals, no hearing held.
Can I ask a question on Planning and Zoning Report? I think Holly might be able to answer it.
She might.
I was curious, under the discussion of Baya Kitchen and the dumpster issue, how does that differ from the dumpster that was there when it was Mama Lucia's?
They wanted to relocate it. So that, that request was denied, but they do have another request. They've adjusted it again.
I saw the discussion. I just wasn't sure what was different from what was there before.
Just moving it.
I had actually a question regarding a bullet in here as well. So maybe you can be forward to to Larry. So the second bullet here states that Ms. Yolanda Holmes, et cetera, et cetera, on the part of the C Street alley she owns. That wording strikes me as odd. Can you clarify that?
There is a portion of the alley that this homeowner does own, in fact. There, there was a, a transfer of ownership to this property owner when State Highway came in to expand the road. And so that, that's when that took place.
Can you, can you tell me where that is, on between what streets? Or I'm just struggling with that a little bit.
It is, it's a dead end street. So it's, it's, it's really just an alley servicing her property.
So it's just that stretch of C Street that then ends? Yeah. So it's not that, okay, that, thank you for the clarification. Good.
Thank you, Charlie.
I had one too.
Please.
Sorry. Yeah, it's more like, more like a comment because I do listen to all these planning and zoning meetings. And although I understand the impetus behind the second page, other issues, and I, I don't want to interfere with how they conduct their business. I do want to ensure that all these new sort of rules don't impede the fleet, free flow of information that has been occurring on planning and zoning that has led to like motions and discussions and decisions. And so just having, having listened to all these meetings, I just want to ensure that, that, that free flow of conversation is not impeded. And so not trying to tell them how to do their job because it's not my place. But just know I have a few concerns there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, sir. Please, everybody.
I did read where the chairman was going to ultimately recommend that the commission not hold a public hearing. Who's decided that they should?
Don't understand that right, they're going to have their own public hearing. We're going to have two public hearings, one for, there'll be a planning and zoning one and there'll be a town council.
Obviously, that's as another month or so into that, that process.
Appropriate time, they'll be there. I can't give you a date now.
Who decided that that's what we definitely need to do? Mayor decided.
Correct.
Mayor himself. Okay, thank you.
C Box. I love you, John Bacon, but I got to tell you something. Sue Alexanders is rolling off my lips. So Sue, how are you? Anything you want to share with us?
Not a thing. We are wrapping up the year. We just had a meeting yesterday with CPACs and the Coastal Conservation Agency about planning for next year and the field trips and the Oyster Reef Falls and how that program is going to go. But other than that, everything's going smoothly so far.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
We're going to try.
Great to have you here.
And just for the record, town wants to congratulate and thank John Bacon for his years of service to C Box and to our town.
Absolutely.
Get that on the record.
Yes, indeedy. Climate Change Advisory Group, Larry Jaworski.
We had a meeting of the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee. And just to refresh everyone's memory, the way this is set up is we have a work group consisting of a lot of town staff. And we then established the Steering Committee, which is a group of citizens that is in place to sort of oversee the efforts of the work group. They met, actually it was last night. That group is chaired by Jeff Fols, who formerly was on Planning and Zoning. And again, their purpose is to just sort of oversee everything that's going on and make sure it's making sense and heading in the right direction. They discussed the mission of the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee. They are going to be working on public engagement goals as to how they're going to reach out to the public on targeted engagement and steps forward. As part of that, I'll just mention as part of the town, town administrator's report, it was noted that our town received a grant from Maryland Department of Natural Resources for the mapping that's associated with this effort. And that's what we were talking about earlier, the status of that. And the next meeting of the Steering Committee will be July 13th. And it will be here in person and also virtual. So you can check the town website for the information. That's all I have.
Very good, sir. But don't go anywhere. EDC.
EDC. We had a meeting of the County Economic Development Advisory Commission meeting. Actually, it was yesterday as well. Yesterday was a very busy day. The group got together, discussed a number of issues of development within the county. I, I'm not sure if I'm happy or sad to report that I was re-elected as chair of the Economic Development Advisory Commission going forward for another year. They're looking to fill a number of staff positions. So if anyone's listening in on this and you're interested, please reach out to the County Economic Development Department. They have a number of positions open there. And we discussed a number of events going on around the county, including first Fridays, of course, our fireworks, Taste of Beaches, and other events around town. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Green Team, Valerie Bodine.
Yeah, just a few updates. I was a little slow on the, getting the green team minutes, so I apologize for that. It kind of happens when you have a kid graduate high school and you have guests in town, I think. I'm not sure. But saying that, our next green team meeting will be posted on the email blast that come out. And it'll be the fourth Thursday of the month, which is June 23rd, 6:30 in the pavilion by the water park and the electrical charging station. A few things that are going on. You may notice near Bayfront Park, the entrance, there are two areas that the ASU entrance that have been prepared for planting. And there has been discussion with the green team on the design and what will be planted there. And due to the wet spring that we've had and the lateness in the season, that'll be Monday, October 3rd, when the actual planting will occur. Because I know green team members are interested in being present. Speaking on that same sort of idea, talk is going on because there's a, a tree at the railway trail entrance that needs to be taken out eventually, replaced with something. And it has a sign, I believe it's a Norway spruce sign. And ideas are formulating there also regarding the Bayfront Park entrance. There's talk about using some of the railway bridge pieces to start kind of like a theme, if you will, much like what we have out here where Nancy's Garden is, the, the one at Town Hall. So we can potentially use those pieces to create a theme within town. We haven't really talked too much about adding one at the Bayfront Park, I mean, the railway trail entrance, but you never know what we'll come up with. Also, Paddle and Pathway Pickup will be this fall. And funny, when you run into Girl Scouts, all of a sudden they want to volunteer and get their hands dirty. So for our Paddle and Pathway Pickup, I think we have some more volunteers who are from daisies to the cadets that are interested in helping the town provide free service. And so I look forward to following up on that and seeing how to engage these young ladies in any way that they wish. So that's kind of exciting to get some younger folks involved also, you know, the kids. As we can see from the presentation earlier, they want to help. And so I have no problems putting them to work. Other than that, that's all.
True mom. No problem putting them to work.
Absolutely no problem. The kids do not want to sit in a meeting and be bored to tears. They want to get their hands dirty and play in the mud. I'm all for it.
Wonderful report. Thank you. Kellums Revitalization Committee, Greg Mars.
Yeah, it's, Wayne has been working, Wayne and Jay have been working on trying to, I guess, massage this, the water draining from the area down there. Town administrator had started a outreach, seeking more public input for these areas in there. Glad to hear that we're getting, seems like we're getting pretty good response there from the, the survey. The name Kellums, Kellums Revitalization. I was just thinking here tonight. Now, I know, I believe we're striving to make improvements there that will bring the public out more so they can use the facility more, be able to enjoy the outdoors more, being here in town. So looking forward to more, more public input. So stay tuned. Councilman Fink, did you have something you wanted to share?
Anything to add other than, you know, there, there's clearly tie-ins in walkability in Kellums. And when I, when I talk about walkability, Kellums will come up. They're just inevitably linked.
Thank you. Okay, Keith. Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, Keith Partick.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So.
So we had no meeting since our last council meeting, but our subcommittees continue to work. You see on the screen is a project narrative that we're currently working on. And it's a sculpture competition to raise awareness about opioid abuse and the people that it affects. And so the idea behind it is that the August 31st International Overdose Awareness Day to announce this competition to local artists to construct sculptures, three of them hopefully is what the plan is for right now. We're currently working on our third location. One would be North Beach, one Chesapeake Beach, and then in Solomon's Island is probably Amory Gardens if they agree to participate. And so we'll announce it this year and then announce the winner a year from now is the idea. And I just want to thank our project lead, Sandy Mattingly, for hearing this and keeping it going, as well as Bob Carpenter, the president of Calvert Arts Council, and Joe Davis, the executive director of the Calvert Arts Council, for lending their support to this project as well. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with them to bring this to fruition. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate that. Walkable Community Advisory Group, Charles Fink.
Yeah, thank you. So we have a handful of things going on right now. I want to start with just the public engagement that's going on. So this is a big part of what, you know, our committee members push for. And we're sort of in the middle of doing public engagement at several different levels. And they cover walkability projects as well as Kellum's Field, as well as some things that the Walkability Group is working on in terms of signage and artwork. And these are all kind of moving parts that I feel pretty good about. So I was happy to hear positive numbers, for sure, on getting those counts back. We have a handful of smaller projects that are in progress. They've been outlined pretty well in the town administrator's report. We have some larger, more substantial projects, and we are just frustratingly, but reality awaiting others. State Highway, and we're waiting on State Highway for smaller things like crosswalk permission, right? While we're not getting responses on, again, I'm going to point at you, but just, you know, we're not getting response on some of these major projects that we thought were done six years ago. So it's frustrating, but we are doing the best we can in following up with these people and also some third parties, AKA, you know, folks that we're trying to get back for developers and so on. So there's a lot of waiting right now. The last thing I'll say on that is we are networking a good deal with folks in North Beach, and I'm looking for some networking opportunities in MML, particularly with some other towns that have done walkability projects. Folks at Habit of Grace is one good example. So hopefully, we'll get some, maybe some useful information on what they've, how they've been able to move some of their projects forward. So at the moment, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor. I was remiss in not asking my co-chairs on Climate Change Advisory Group, Keith, if he had any comments.
No, thanks. Larry, you did a great job. Appreciate it.
And ditto co-chair on economic development, Mr. Morris.
You're supposed to say, "Great job, Larry," just like Keith did.
Well, I was prepared to say fireworks are back in the beach, and it's a big weekend for Twin Beach there. I'm looking forward to being home for the Fourth of July this year. So great job, Larry.
And so ditto that. Peggy, if you have anything to add, you and I talked quite a bit, but if you have anything to add, please feel free.
She got kicked off and she is back on.
I'll do it for her. Great job, Charlie. All right, very good. No unfinished business. Town council to consider the appointment of Kelly Hahn to the Chesapeake Beach Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Comment?
Yes, I'll begin comments with Valerie.
I, like I said, at the work session, I've known Kelly for about a decade. I think she'll be a dedicated, good, conscientious member of planning and zoning, and I just thank her for her willingness to serve.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Kelly did a great job in her conversation. She gets great bona fides from Councilwoman Bodine, among others. And, you know, again, we've heard very clearly from the town zoning administrator and the chair of planning and zoning that they are looking for more support. So I see no reason why I would not vote yes.
No further comments.
Thank you. Mr. Morris.
Yeah, I'd like to commend the mayor for finding this individual. I know in the position he's in, and he knows a lot of people across town and is able to reach out and find people to fill positions at times. And Ms. Hahn is an outstanding individual. I've known her for a long time, and I know that she would bring quite a bit, will bring quite a bit to planning and zoning. I'm going to be opposed to an appointment at this time just because of where we are with comprehensive plan. It's my only concern. Fairly based on the possible burden on existing commissioners and putting maybe some unfair expectations on the incumbent. Again, she's an outstanding individual. I know that she's going to be voted in this evening, and I think that she's an excellent choice for that. But my only reasons for being opposed are really my concerns regarding the effect on a comprehensive plan progress. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words to me. Keith? It's easier when I can see his face.
I appreciate her stepping up to serve on the commission and look forward to working with her. Thanks.
Thank you. And Peggy.
I appreciate it, yes, just as you said, for stepping up. And I think you'll have a great run with this, my commission.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
And we have a new volunteer. Welcome aboard. Thank you, council. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morris, for explaining yourself. That's appreciated. Town council to consider approving an expenditure of $9,721 from the FY22 Water Reclamation Treatment Plan Fund to install a generator access platform.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Either I misheard or you misread the number.
There was an earlier email.
Oh. Or I missed an earlier email.
Access removed.
I have a question.
Okay, we have a, give me a second here. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second? Okay. Right, we have a second? Okay, Larry, you have a comment?
Yes, just a clarification that I understand the reason why the number was changed is because we do not have to pay the tax for the state of Maryland. When I look at the numbers, though, the number that was quoted in here with the tax was $10,237.96. The state tax is noted in here as $525.96, which, when I do the math, I get an adjusted balance of $9,712.
So the number of $9,721 was the finalized quote, and that should be in your, you should have that in your revised packet, Sharon? That's correct amount.
And by approving the higher number, we're good to go.
Yes, sure.
Okay, very good. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Town council to consider approving a contract with Metro AV for $10,263.16.
Move to approve.
From the FY, that's okay. We'll hold you to that. From the FY22 General Fund for upgrades to live stream video capabilities in the town council chambers. We have a motion to approve from Dr. Bodine. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Town council to consider issuing a contract with Chapman for the HVAC in the amount of $14,600 for upgrades in the Public Works Facility from the FY22 General Fund.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Town council to consider authorizing the mayor to execute an access agreement with SHA to complete improvements to the ADA ramps at no cost to the town. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve with a comment?
Let's get a second.
Second.
Second? You wish to comment?
Yes, please. It was just a question for Jay. I know we reviewed this the other night. I was driving by Brownie's over there the other day, and that little connector that kind of cuts off that corner there that looks like SHA is doing some improvement there. We have a sidewalk there now. What are they proposing to just make ADA improvements, I guess, simply?
To be honest, it's very similar to what they did out here. You probably won't see the difference when they're done. They do very little bit of slope increases, and they try to not exceed a 2% slope, but it already exceeds a 2% slope. So they'll bring it back a little farther in for the ramps. And sometimes they add, because everyone thinks ADA, wheelchairs only, but they'll add for the visually impaired, the concrete stamps that you can feel with a walking stick. But that's on them. But I'll be honest, at the end, when it's done, you won't see the difference. I'm just being honest.
Okay. Nothing but taxpayer money well spent, I guess. Glad that they're coming to town to do that work, I suppose. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Town council to consider requesting advisement from the Planning and Zoning Commission on immediate term text amendments to provide a recommendation to the town council. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Comment?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I'll take comments from the council, from Peggy. From everybody, starting with Peggy. We can hear you. Thank you. Keith? Mr. Morris?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I know that the commissioners have done a good job, in my opinion, and will do, continue to do a good job with their new addition, their new colleague. And I know that they're committed to doing a good job for the town. A couple of comments about what we're directing them here. I know that we have a memo from Chris, and there are some specific text amendments that he's, has outlined as being the most vital to protecting the primary amendments to protect the vision and the new comprehensive plan. I want to be clear, though, in my opinion here, the the, I want to ensure that the commissioners' consensus in determining the most vital amendments and not, it's not the intention of this council, I don't believe, to have them specifically focused on that short list verbatim that Chris had in his memo there, but what the commissioners feel themselves with Chris's guidance, what are going to be the most important things up front that they need to address. Conversely, the planning and zoning should not be looking at changes that are in conflict with the primary vision elements of the comprehensive plan. We have to be really careful of that. The comprehensive plan was passed. We have our vision there. We're looking at text amendments to support that vision, not to alter that vision in that plan. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What was I going with that? Okay, Larry, you have any questions?
I did, but I'll pass.
Thank you. Yeah, Charlie?
A procedural question. So we're requesting planning and zoning to provide recommendations of text amendments. At some point, we will see those in a work session where they can be discussed. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct, yeah.
So well before we are voting on anything, we will have an opportunity to see them and to discuss them in a work session, and they will also then be before the public.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. Topic near and dear to my heart. So, well, the first thing I would do is I'd really encourage planning and zoning in the public to listen to the work session. I think that coming out of the work session, there were some really good points by all town council members, and so those points ought to be considered in a judicious way. From my perspective, what I'm looking for is whenever, whatever comes before us is consistent. It creates a consistent code so that there's no logical flow problems. And I think I described one pretty well at the work session, where just by having the land use definitions in that part of the code, it does not fall naturally to Section 290-11, AB through Section 290-11, BB, or Section 290-12, 290-19. If we only are getting an incomplete picture from a logical point of view, if someone opens up Section 290 that is new to town and says, "I want to build a house," they're going to go to the land use map and the land use description and say, "Okay, what can I build?" And then from that land use map, they're going to go to the table as directed and look at what's permitted and what's conditional or what's SE. From there, they're then going to go to what the conditions are in Section 290-11. And so what I want is a code that comes back to us, whether it be Section 290-11, 290-12, 290-19, that if I was new to town, I could follow in a logical pattern and know what I was allowed to do. And so my expectation is not a 30,000-foot view. My view is going to be from the private property owner. If I read this code, is it logical and does it flow? And so I would, at the end of the day, hope that we get Section 290 and then the specific changes to 290, much like they presented us with this chart. And I'm showing the chart of the amended table for planning commissions. It's very clear, it's color-coded as to what's been changed. And I would expect the same for Section 290. And so we have to have a logical, complete flow. It cannot be a 30,000-foot view, in my opinion, or we will have known inconsistencies within our Section 290 code. And so that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have it, 6-0. Thank you, council. At this time, I ask this, do we have any public comment? Every none. Council lightning round. I'll begin with Valerie.
I have nothing. I just hope that everyone has a wonderful July 4th and enjoy the summer. As Pat discussed, it's a wonderful time to be in the beach, take advantage of it. We have free boat ramps. We have the water park. It is time to get out and enjoy some walking as you look around and see what the Walkability Committee could do and is doing. This is a great time to be in town, so take advantage.
Bear with me, I have some brief comments. I had an incident today that reminded me of my mantra that I've been beating, drum I've been beating about civility. And then it really hit me in rereading the water park report. It is undoubtedly wise, but infinitely sad that the water park employees had to undergo, had to go through violent critical incident response training. Wise but sad. I had an incident today on my bike. I did something questionable. The other guy in the car did something equally questionable. There was cursing and yelling, and I actually turned around. I went back because he was in a big truck with a trailer, and he ended up having to back up and reverse. And I helped him block traffic while he got his truck where it needed to be. I'm not saying he and I are going out for beers anytime soon, but we ended on a civil note, and it didn't have to be that way. And I'm not taking credit because I probably started it. Civility, folks, it's just not that hard. So I really encourage us, as we get into summer, things get hot, people are out, you know, walking, someone's walking on your side of the sidewalk, be civil. someone's walking on your side of the sidewalk, uh, be civil. Lastly, uh, remember to check out the public engagement for all the really great town projects we're working on. If we don't hear your input, we're going to build what we do here. So get out there and, uh, fill out those forms. Thank you.
Real quick, uh, see everyone on Saturday, July 3rd for the fireworks. I'm really looking forward to starting that again this year. And then Taste of Beaches on Saturday, September 17th. Thank you.
Yeah, before I go to, um, Councilman Morris, um, Councilman Fink's, uh, you know, a lightning round reminded me of one of my, uh, hit my funny bone Philadelphia sports stories. There was a, uh, this is back, back in my youth, there was a, uh, Phillies game. If you guys don't, don't know it, you know, the Phillies, Eagles, the Flyers, all the Philadelphia teams practice at this one end of town. They practice and play at this one end of town, South Philly. And, um, by chance, you know, the, the Phillies lost a playoff game and by chance, uh, the Eagles, you know, practice was over. And, uh, so the Phillies fans were really mad, you know, and they were, were, you know, driving up and there was a little bit of a road rage, incident with, with these, you know, Philly sports fans and these guys in the car who were about Charlie's size, you know, and they probably couldn't tell how, well, fan how stocky Charlie is, you know. So these guys, they get out there and it's, it's road rage and all that kind of stuff. And when everybody, you know, got out, the Phillies fans realized that these short, stocky guys were the Philadelphia Eagles. You never solve civility in your life. It puts a new meaning to the whole world word. So anyhow, I, I couldn't help myself, Charlie.
I want to jump around a little bit. Um, folks, uh, this is, uh, MML weekend. Um, the Maryland Municipal League holds this annual, that summer conference. They haven't had it the past couple of years. I do want to express my gratitude to the town and the taxpayers for, um, I'm going to be in attendance, uh, this year. Um, I know every year I've ever gone, um, it's, it's definitely, it's a big learning experience. Uh, you can get out, you can get around the folks that are from the municipalities and, and network and learn things from them and get different perspectives. That's kind of what that's all about, um, in helping us to raise our awareness and our game here of, for your, being your, uh, council people. Um, oh, I did want to give a shout out to, uh, Les, the, uh, the town landscaping does look great. Um, I, I want to mention something. Um, I know some of you all are aware of, Principal Mike Schisler, um, who had resigned, he had, uh, retired from Beach Elementary. About a year ago, I, I suppose now. Um, and they're finally having a little kickoff service for him and a couple of his very important colleagues, uh, this Saturday night. And, um, been honored to be in attendance and I was asked to say a few words. Uh, and I wanted to share a few of those words with you all tonight. There have been countless individuals that make Beach Elementary. Um, some that I've had the privilege to know for a really long time. Others that I just didn't get to know, but they're there. Um, and when the new building is occupied, Beach Elementary will still be you and me. Uh, it will still be all of the teachers, past and present. Um, all of the parents and, and children that are, that will be in attendance for that year. And it will still be in part, all of the, the children that went before. So, um, there'll be a new building eventually there. Um, but that building will be comprised of everybody that went before it. And this town hall has been in support of that, that school ever since I can remember. Um, it's a really special thing. Um, we're really blessed to have that, that, that school here, uh, with us. And we're super, blah, blessed that there's a new one going in. Um, it's a really exciting time. Uh, if you're getting ready to, your kids are getting ready to go into Beach Elementary. Um, it's an exciting time if you, um, your kids have graduated from college and they attended five or six years there at Beach Elementary. So, um, you know, um, I'll be looking forward to, uh, saying goodbye to, uh, Mike Schisler and, uh, that, that group who have meant, who have meant so much to so many of us for, for so long. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm glad that, that you brought that up because there is an event for Dr. Schisler on, on Saturday and I was remiss in not mentioning that. So, thank you, Councilman. Keith, if you're still with us.
I am still here. Thank you. Um, you know, I just wanted to thank you, Mayor. I really appreciated your mayor's report tonight. And I think that's a great thing you and the administration are doing, uh, incorporating, you know, health services and social awareness, um, in all the town events, uh, going forward. So thank you very much. Wonderful thing. And I just want to wish you all a great evening. And, uh, we'll see you hopefully all next week at MML.
Hopefully so, sir. Thank you. And lastly, Peggy?
Hi, well, I just want to say after a, uh, brief moment of silence while the presentation was done, I think our town is really going to enjoy having the new AV system where you actually hear the presentation. Because it's kind of hot, so it's dreadful.
Can't hear you, Peggy.
You can't see either.
Yeah, can't see either. Thank you, Peggy.
Valerie made a comment about, uh, the 30,000 feet. And it made me think, going back to the original, um, public comment on changing the, the, um, different zones, do we have a massive overlay of the new and the old, what's in plans?
We can. Yeah, we can. I've actually just looked at it side by side. Thank you, Peggy.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and, uh, appreciate your understanding of everything. Um, your motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Hey, um, you want to go for a beer or you?
No, prefer not. I'm going to get.
Um, we'll talk, I guess, tomorrow. So, um, you're going to go Sunday afternoon.
Probably morning, because there's a 2:30 session.
Okay, so you're going to leave late morning.
Yeah.
And, um, you're going to return Wednesday.
I can't remember.
Okay, okay.
You're welcome to have a ride back.